A little bit of a delay today. Chairman Hilton got stuck on a traffic accident in the city senate now on seventy-one. So with that being said, we're gonna, we're gonna move on with the public hearing. And I will now call the meeting of the Air Pollution Control Disputing Board order. And the first thing on the agenda is a public hearing. This public hearing held by Louisville Metro Air Pollution Control Board is called an order, called to order and is being held pursuant to KRS Chapter Seventy-Seven and District Regulations. Notice that this hearing has been published pursuant to state law. All statements must be presented today. Statements should be concise. If you have a written version of your statement, please submit it to Ms. Hamilton after your presentation. All statements will become part of the hearing record. There are two amended board agreed orders to be reviewed today. First, would the staff please submit the amended agreed order of BAE Systems Land and Armaments LP? Mr. King?
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. The district brings an amended agreed order to the board for consideration. BAE Systems is a defense contractor and operates pursuant to the district operating permit. The Louisville facility, among other things, shot glass metal parts. This amended agreement with BAE corrects the description of the appropriate filter to use to control particulate emissions, including heavy metals from one of the shot glass units. In two thousand and fourteen, the board entered into an agreement to resolve a violation for failing stack test on the shot glass unit. As part of the facility's evaluation of the failed test, it was noted that the original filters that were designed for the system were replaced with a less efficient refurbished filter that developed holes. The correct filters were installed at that time, back in two thousand and fourteen. The stack test, stack testing was then conducted showing compliance with all applicable standards, and the same type of filters are still used in the unit today. The amendment, the amended order removes the requirement that the filters be guaranteed to achieve ninety-nine point nine percent removal efficiency. The proper original filters do not achieve this level of efficiency, but do reduce the emissions to levels below the applicable standards. From the best I can tell, it was meant to describe these filters, but was used from an older data sheet on the filters. And in order to issue the new permit, we needed to correct that discrepancy. So we're recommending that the board adopt the order as amended.
Thank you, Mr. King. Would Representative BAE like to make a statement this morning?
We would. We would just like to thank the district for all of your efforts to resolve this discrepancy.
Thank you. Does anyone from the public wish to make a statement? Does anyone else wish to make a statement? Are there any questions by any board members?
I have a question. What's the efficiency of the current filters?
Uh, the last test, I believe, was ninety-nine point four.
Any others? Moving on to the second, would the staff please submit the amended agreed order with Cosmos Cement Company? Ms. Hamilton?
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. The district brings to the board's consideration an amended agreement with Cosmos Cement Company, which operates a cement plant in southwestern portion of Jefferson County, Kentucky pursuant to a Title Five permit and an agreed board order, which the board previously approved on April nineteenth, twenty seventeen. District Regulation Three Point Zero One Ambient Air Quality Standard Section Four prohibits the emission of any air contaminant at levels or in such a way as would interfere with the maintenance of an ambient air quality standard. As a result of earlier modeling of the Cosmos Cement Company by the Kentucky Division for Air Quality and the district, which was conducted in accordance with the guidance for the one-hour SO2 non-attainment area SIPs emissions as part of the adjacent partial non-attainment area near the sole source of SO2 emissions, Mill Creek. The district determined that it was necessary to conduct ambient air quality monitoring to better characterize the ambient concentrations of SO2 in the vicinity of the company's facility and determine whether those SO2 emissions violate the SO2 NACs outside the non-attainment area. At its April meeting, the board approved entry of agreed board order between the company and the district that called for us to implement an SO2 monitoring plan and certain other related requirements in accordance with federal rules and US EPA's non-binding technical assistance document, the SO2 NACs designation Source Oriented Monitoring Technical Assistance document as appropriate and in the professional judgment of the district. Since that time, staff at the district, particularly those in the air monitoring, program planning, and other program managers have worked to diligently address this issue. On June twenty-third, twenty seventeen, the district submitted a revision to its state implementation plan addressing the partial non-attainment area for approval by US EPA. The district timely signed a new air monitoring site, Cosmos Dale Site, in accordance with Forty CFR Part Fifty-Eight and received approval from US EPA in February twenty eighteen. The district and Cosmos engaged in negotiations to develop an acceptable site access agreement. In November twenty eighteen, US EPA proposed approving the district's SIP submittal, which included seeking comment on the district's decision to not include SO2 emissions from Cosmos, a source nearby but outside the boundary of the non-attainment area submitted as part of the plan. On June twenty-eighth, twenty nineteen, US EPA approved the district's SIP submission addressing the partial SO2 non-attainment area as proposed. The area now meets the SO2 standard of seventy-five parts per billion. The current design value is twelve parts per billion. So on December fifth, twenty nineteen, the district requested redesignation of the partial non-attainment area from US EPA to attainment. It is our understanding that approval is forthcoming. Shortly before the district received EPA's approval in June twenty nineteen, Cosmos approached the district about constructing a new taller stack in lieu of monitoring. Cosmos conducted additional modeling to demonstrate that model emission from the proposed taller stack would not exceed the one-hour SO2 standard. And this information was reviewed by the district, the Kentucky Division for Air Quality, and US EPA, who provided their review in late December twenty nineteen. During that timeframe in November twenty nineteen, Cosmos notified the district of its intent to transfer substantially all of its assets, including the Louisville plant and the Cosmos parcel, to Cosmos Cement Company LLC, an unrelated third party and subsidiary of Eagle Materials. This transaction is scheduled to close by March of twenty twenty, so this agreement is with both Cosmos and Eagle Materials. This agreement requires the company to monitor, or it may construct a taller stack after notifying the district of its intent to do so by March thirty-first, twenty twenty. The district will advise the board at its April meeting of the company's decision. The district recommends the board adopt the order as proposed.
Thank you, Ms. Hamilton. Would Representative Cosmos Cement Company like to make a statement this morning?
Yes, Cosmos Barleyers from Cosmos. We support the amendment as proposed to the district, and we appreciate your time and cooperation in coming to a robust agreement.
Thank you. Does anyone from the public wish to make a statement this morning? Does anyone else wish to make a statement? And are there any questions by board members? There being no further statements or questions, this public hearing is adjourned. And we will move, a call to order, the meeting of the Louisville Air Pollution Control Board. I believe we have a form. Good. Any introductions? No. Thank you. Any public recognitions this morning?
Not this morning.
Thank you. The minutes of our last meeting were distributed. Is there any comments on those from the board? If not, we'll accept those minutes. Ms. Hamilton, do we have public comments this morning?
I perceive none this morning.
Do we have any unfinished business?
Not this morning.
New business? Okay.
Because there are decisions.
If we don't have sufficient voting power at this moment to throw it out, would you like to address this?
Sure.
Thank you.
Mr. Sullivan has asked for an ethics opinion regarding some charity fundraising before he votes on matters that come before the board, which we are awaiting that opinion very shortly. So because he has recused himself from voting until that opinion is made, we only have three members that can vote at this time, and we need four. If Chairman Hilton does arrive before the end of the meeting, we can take up a vote at the end of the meeting, but we will need Chairman Hilton for us to have a form to vote.
So we're typically able to this in the final decision at the end.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to committee reports. Do we have any committee, any committees held?
No, sir.
Thank you. Now we'll turn over to Director Tal for statement of the board.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. So I will start this morning by bringing to the board's attention that we had the opportunity for a meeting with the Energy and Environment, the new Energy and Environmental Cabinet Secretary, Rebecca Goodman in Frankfort. She was appointed this past December twenty nineteen by Governor Beshear. In that meeting, we had Tony Hatton, the Commissioner of the Department of Environmental Protection, Deputy Commissioner Sean Alteri, who I will report out, has moved on to the private sector and been replaced by John Lyons in that position. Melissa Duck, the Director of the Division for Air Quality, and then representatives from LGNE were present. Deputy Mayor Ellen Hesent and Louisville Ford Chief Mary Ellen Wheeler-Wall were present representing Metro Government. And then Rachel Hamilton, Matt King, Stacy Dot, and I were in attendance representing the district. And really, it was a meet and greet. It was an opportunity to meet with Secretary Goodman. But I will go over a few of the things that were covered in that meeting. And I'm actually very pleased to find out that she expressed, first off, her interest in expanding solar technology in Kentucky. And so she talked, said that she has had some meetings with some outside solar providers, internally, some have taken place. And so that was really, from our point of view, just good news. She indicated that she would be providing the government with a proposal for the long-stalled BW settlement here in Kentucky. At this meeting, she didn't offer up very many details about that proposal, but on this past Monday, Governor Andy Beshear announced a new plan to spend twenty-point-three billion, which was our allocation for the state of Kentucky, under the Volkswagen Environmental Mitigation Trust. Governor Beshear's proposal would allocate seventy-five percent of that funding to replace aging school buses in every county in Kentucky with cleaner emission vehicles. The plan would also put twenty percent of the funds toward federal transit to provide cleaner transit buses in parts of Kentucky not meeting the federal guidelines. That obviously would include Louisville and northern Kentucky. And so our understanding is, is that those funds will help go to support a grant proposal that TARP has for the purchase of additional vehicles as matching funds. And then five percent of those funds would be used to cover the administrative costs associated with the trust. So those, just in a press release, that's all we know at this time about how those funds will be allocated. Do not know what those allocation of buses per county would be at this point.
Does that allocation have to be approved by the House or something?
I think it, I'm not a hundred percent sure it's all of them, so, but I think so. Rachel's shaking her head yet, so. So it probably has a way to go, but I think it was pretty well vetted before it got to the governor's desk. I wouldn't expect that there's any pickup to that one. I will also, at this meeting, bring to the board's attention that there was a discussion about the opportunity for LGNE to provide some additional non-reduction to its Mill Creek facility, which obviously would be extremely beneficial in terms of helping us meet the new ozone standard. These were obviously some very preliminary discussions, so I won't try to get into any of the details, other than to say that those conversations were productive and those conversations are continuing. And so I hope to be able to advise the board further on that at the next board meeting. We did attend a Metro Council meeting on the February eleventh. APCD was invited to present to the Metro Council Labor and Economic Development Committee regarding the resolution related to RFG, which formerly it gas. We had previously had the opportunity to speak with Councilman Pierre Giattini, who was the resolution sponsor one-on-one. That was a good meeting. We had an opportunity to talk about how we plan to move forward on that, answer any questions that he might have. And so in both cases, the meeting with the councilman and then the meeting before the committee, the district was able to reiterate our position. And it's been our position from, from the very beginning, it's been the position that we, when this first came out, that we gave to the press, that I give into the administration, that we talked about in Frankfort with the new secretary. And that position is that our primary goal is to meet the new ozone standard. That's our primary goal, that is our focus. Any discussion of RFG, obviously from our point of view, comes after we meet that goal. We also had the opportunity to discuss the multilingual stakeholder group process, how that's going, how that, how we expect to get recommendations from those meetings that will help us to reach that goal. And so I think what ultimately came out of this meeting was that the Kentucky, Kentucky, the Metro Council has amended its resolution to more closely mirror the resolution that is with the General Assembly in Frankfort. And in both cases, they understand our position and understand that we would pursue taking a look at the removal of RFG at the appropriate time, which for us is when we reach attainment for the ozone, for the new ozone standard. I think in both cases, or I guess I should say, in the case of Metro Council, that was a good meeting. I think they're comfortable with the process that we're gonna go through to meet that. And what they really asked us was to do is at the appropriate time to come back, meet with them, tell them what the plans are moving forward if we're entertaining, to talk to them about the process for the removal of RFG. And we try to make it clear to them that that's not an instantaneous process. It's a lot of paperwork that we go through. It's a demonstration project that we provide to EPA, and that ultimately, that final decision, that decision does rest with EPA, not with us. It's part of the board report, and so you're all aware that we had a NOV to MSD. As you remember, this was a non-monetary notice of violation, but it included several compliance measures and requirements which MSD was required to respond to the district. They provided an initial response, and we met with them to discuss. And while they, to some degree, addressed most of the issues in the notice of violation, in short, the district felt that they needed to put more meat on that discussion, on the bones of their response. So we requested that they expand on some of those items that they presented to us. And then more importantly, we requested that they put some timetables on those deliverables. Their responses were a little varied in regard in terms of when they would do the things that they said they were gonna do. And so two things, we wanted to make sure that we were clear on what it was they were gonna do, how they were gonna do it, a little bit more detail, and then some timetables on those deliverables, deliverables. And so we'll get a response back from them on that, and we'll keep the board informed of those discussions and negotiations.
Certainly, for their response?
Not yet.
Not yet.
There was a public hearing for a clearing corporation on a construction permit, which was held on January the twenty-eighth. We did that hearing from four to seven P.M. There were four speakers during the public hearing. The district is in the process of preparing a written response for those comments, and so we will make those public again, deliver those responses to those who make comments once that's completed. So let's talk a little bit about some of the things that have been going on. I always like to keep you guys up to date. Michelle and I attended the Healthy Louisville Twenty Twenty-Five Press Conference, which was held on January eleventh. That new report, which is done by the Metro Health and Wellness, was built on four pillars of work, and they are to build healthy neighborhoods, environmental equity, ensure equitable housing, and create healthy schools. And so the key metrics for the environmental part, the key metrics for environmental equity, they talked about normalize the difference in vegetated index data, basically the breeding of our community. And then they also did have a lot of detail. They talked that they wanted to develop some additional KPIs related to environmental equity, but they wanted to do that in conjunction with the community. They intend this fully to be a living document driven by community interest. That's how they put the, put it together. There were numerous community meetings that they put that plan together. APCD will continue to support and contribute to these efforts as appropriate. And I just want to point out, the emphasis of this plan is on community engagement and concentrating on high needs areas. And that is completely in line with how the district approaches its work and our objectives. And so there's some, some, some meeting of the minds in that regard. It was also good to see in this plan that they recognized and highlighted that for, from the environmental side, this is more than just planting trees. They look at it as a system-wide approach, a metro government-wide approach to prioritizing the natural environment, including safe streets, smart zoning, and then other related efforts that would be necessary to put a comprehensive plan in place that kind of addresses all of the issues instead of just really isolated focused issues that, while we've had a lot of those in the past, haven't been completely successful in addressing environmental equity. There was a Metro Sustainability Meeting, and I wanted to bring this board to, this to the board's attention because there's a lot of complimentary work going on in those meetings that are being done by Metro Government. Just to bring your attention, Metro Council has approved a hundred percent clean energy resolution, which the administration supports. And then in support of sustainability issues, Metro is working on several initiatives. LED street lighting, which is just a more cost-effective way to, to light up our streets. They're exploring grants, grants for community resilience and green buildings. They're proposing an emission reduction plan, and then a climate adaptation plan is in the works. And I want to make you aware that these are ongoing regularly scheduled meetings with Metro, so this is not a one-off for them. This is something that they talk about on a regular basis. And so as these things come to fruition and different opportunities for the district to be involved, I'll keep you abreast of what the district's contribution and then also the overall plan as for Metro in terms of sustainability issues. So we have opportunity here to talk a little bit about some staff recognitions and then also some, some work that is done by staff that could be considered a little bit above and beyond a call to duty. So in that regard, on this past Friday, Michelle King was part of a radio show on WFPK focused on climate change entitled Clash for the Climate. Along with Michelle on that show, it included Ryan Van Velser, the WFP of Energy and Environment reporter, Cindy Sullivan, the Executive Director of Trees Louisville, and John Walzak, Director of the Louisville Zoo. And they all had the opportunity to bring their unique perspective on the impact of climate change and talk a little bit about their work respectively and how they hope to help, their work helps to address those issues. Let me also add that, in the same vein, Metro's Office of Sustainability is working to address climate change, and they have adopted, they have produced an emissions reduction plan to support the city's goal of eighty percent greenhouse gas reduction by twenty fifty. And as I think I mentioned earlier, the climate adaptation plan will be released in April. And I've mentioned this one before, but I wanted to follow up because there was some additional work done. At the ACPA, the Association for Air Pollution Control Agencies, we were recognized for best practices for our Clearing the Air Workshop Series. But not only were Torin able to present at the national conference, she was also able to provide a presentation via webinar, which would meet a much larger audience. And so she was able to do that a couple of weeks ago. It is really good work, and it's becoming recognized as a national model, this type of community outreach effort. And then I just want to follow up again by commending Michelle King, Torin Collins, and then all of the staff that have been a part of the work to put on the Turning the Air Workshop. These are efforts to inform and provide transparency to the community, and they really are being incorporated into the daily work that we do. Additionally, and I think I've mentioned this to the board before, but Torin also has completed the second phase of her National Fellowship on the Environmental Leadership Program. And I just want to point out that not only is this important for her and then what she can bring back to, to the district in terms of what she learns there, and there's a heavy emphasis in this, this project in terms of diversity and equity-type issue. And so we've also reached out to Kelly Watson, who's the Chief Equity Officer for Metro Government, had a preliminary discussion with her, and we want to be able to utilize what Torin has learned and present that metro-wide. And so those discussions are going on, and we want to make that, that kind of professional development not just beneficial for the district, but in this case, beneficial to Metro Government as a whole. And another opportunity for recognition, CAR coordinator Dee Lynch collaborated with other outreach coordinators across the country on a recent NACA call about anti-idling strategies. And in particular, she presented CAR's cutting-edge use of the Waze Navigation App to deliver free, to deliver idle-free messages at the moment when the GPS senses that drivers are idling. She also shared CAR's use of the Weather Channel App as part of a successful campaign to deliver air quality messages in a meaningful way to local consumers. All of these strategies are new, and agencies across the country were excited about that information and have, and will be following up with Dee to learn more. So this is just APCD staff and my coworkers doing an excellent job out there in the community, in many cases, leading on a national level. So let's keep the recognition theme going. At the beginning of this month, Byron Gary completed the Executive Fellowship Fellow Program. This is a Metro program, a one-year leadership development program to provide official recognition, professional development opportunity, and project involvement. In addition to a year's worth of training, Byron completed both an individual project for APCD and then participated in a group project to benefit Metro, which group presented to their managers and directors and then to the mayor and his leadership team. For the individual project, Byron created an ozone dashboard with Power BMI, pulling monitoring data from the region, for, for the region from EPA's AQS system and then SIMS data, which is a continuous emission monitoring, monitoring data from the CAMD on a national level. And so he's putting that all into a dashboard that we'll be able to utilize. For the group project, they completed two stages in evaluating Safe Stat Program for Phase Two. First, they completed a comprehensive inventory of public safety-related programs across Metro. And second, made recommendations for the cross-departmental alignment and improvement of the program. For example, Gary made a map to show how data collected from various departments, for example, crime and vacancies, could be compared with demographics and other public data such as census and national merit toxic assessment data, as well as services in the community such as community centers, and to make sure that all of these resources were aligned across departments and allocated as needed. Welcome. Sorry you sneaked in. Last month, Steve Revett and Kyle Zimmerman from the Compliance and Enforcement Section attended the West Jefferson County Community Task Force. They were able to sit down with the group and discuss how the district sees old complaints and utilizes various complaint input sources, such as the Smell My City app to conduct our older investigations. And it's just really important to point out that we will take any and every opportunity to get out in the community, talk about the work we can do, and then how that work can benefit folks in the, in the community. On this past Saturday, Torin and I manned a booth at the Joint Metro Council Community Event for Districts Three and Four, which are Councilwoman Barbara Sexton Smith and Keisha Dorsey, respectively. It was held at the Eighteenth Street Y. And if you have not seen that new Y, it is absolutely wonderful facility. It is, it is a absolute benefit and plus for the West Louisville community to have that facility constructed there. And then rather than giving this to you secondhand, I will allow And then rather than giving this to you secondhand, I will allow Michelle King and, she just, I did, just to give a brief update on the multiple stakeholder group process.
Sure. The multiple stakeholder committees, the Point Area Global Services Committees, the Outreach and Education and Health Committees, there's five of them, they have been meeting every other week for the past ten months or so. It seems like a lot longer because it's been a very fast-paced process, but all of those committees have moved into a phase of developing recommendations. So each committee has at least one more, some two more meetings already scheduled. So we're looking forward to getting those recommendations finalized and then we'll be bringing those back to the full multiple stakeholder group for some discussion and finalization and adoption from that group. So at that point, we'll also be preparing a final report that documents the entire process, the discussion, the information that was presented. It's been a really excellent process in addition to the recommendations that are being developed. I think that one of the biggest benefits of this process has been the shared conversation that we've had across this really broad group of stakeholders that have come together. So we're learning a lot. I think our stakeholders are more learning a lot and we're really looking forward to having that resource document at the end to help not only plan APCD's work going forward, but also to carry some of those recommendations to some of our partner organizations throughout the community so that we all can, you know, kind of work together toward the better air quality and hopefully also have that document be sort of a resource for our community to develop additional ideas and more feedback for APCD as we go forward. So we'll be presenting more updates to the board in the next couple of months as that starts marching towards its completion date. But it's been going really well and we're just really pleased with the kind of discussion that we've been having in those committees.
Before you move to the found center as part of the director's report, I'll ask the board to ask any questions from me from the report so far. Cut question on formulated gases. Authority isn't changed, is it the Fed's or is it Metro Council or state? Ultimately, the governor is the ones who opted in.
Governor opted us into RFG as a more stringent control measure. The decision to have RFG as a control measure is part of the district's state implementation plan. So removing that control measure, whether it's RFG is the oxygen aid or some other oxygen aid, is something that we would be making that demonstration to do.
You're the demonstrator to EPA that the offset's sufficient?
Correct.
Okay. And then I want to, on behalf of the board, thank the staff for all the great work they're doing. Cara's admission.
Any other questions from the board? You don't have time. So at last month's board meeting, there was a short presentation provided by DJ Fountain, our industrial compliance supervisor on grade one oh seven, as utilized in our excess emissions report. And as I say, that, at that time, that discussion would help lay the foundation for some further discussion with the board as we look at the changes to the risk management, RMP program, our response to those changes and how that might impact our community. So DJ is back to continue that conversation with a further, further discussion on the district's risk management program. DJ?
Thank you. Chair, Vice Chair, and the board, this is Gabriel's presentation on the risk management program. Under Regulation Part Five, Chapter Fifteen, the district administers the risk management program that is part of forty C of R sixty-eight for EPA. So rather than talk about some of these issues that happened over the years that led EPA to propagate rules for chemical saving, there's a list here. If anybody's interested, they can find this presentation on our website and feel free to do some Wikipedia, Google searches and find out more information. So in the late nineties, EPA propagated rules for chemical accident prevention and as part of the title permitting, the district from received permission to administer this program. And as part of that, we entered into a membrane of understanding with emergency management and as part of the planning process engaged with the LEPC and the Air Pollution Control Board at the time to set forth their requirements and to begin administering this program. So the district's role in this is that we've promulgated rules, provide administrative support, funding, and enforcement. Emergency management provides technical expertise in addition to compliance assistance and primarily performs the inspections in response to incidents on behalf of the district. Just as kind of a point of reference, EPA administers a great portion of the country's risk management plan. That is over twelve thousand three hundred sources in the country. Their goal for this year is two hundred and twenty-four inspections, which is one point eight percent of the regulated universe. The district performs these inspections on a three-year rolling basis. So an average of thirty-three percent of all our sources get inspected every, every Purpose of risk management plan rule is to prevent chemical accidents and to minimize the consequences of any releases that do occur. There are three basic elements to the program. For a stationary source that has a threshold quantity of regulated chemical, meaning that either toxic or flammable, it requires to have a hazard assessment, prevention program, and response program. And in the following slides, I'll detail a little bit about those. So first element, hazard assessment, that requires off-site consequence analysis. Each company is required to analyze the, these companies are required to analyze the worst case possible release. This is generally a catastrophic release, a catastrophic failure of the largest vessel and at least one alternate case release, which typically would be something that's more likely to happen. This is generally something such as a piece of equipment failing, such as a transfer hose, a piece of piping, or possibly a whole vessel. And all of these analyses require consideration of off-site consequences, population, environmental effects that could occur. Next element is the prevention program. And I'm going to discuss all the elements for sake of privacy, just to highlight a couple. One of the more important items is process hazard analysis. So this is a process that a company should go through to analyze the process and the equipment and determine what hazards are, what possible failure methods could occur, and then consider what mitigation they should put into place in order to stop the accidents or releases that are occurring. The program also requires operating procedures. The operating procedures are typically very detailed and discuss how a process can be safely operated, what safe operating limits of the process are, and procedures for emergency Other set of items under prevention program, compliance audits, this is one that the companies were required to perform every three years to determine if they are in compliance with the program. So this is an internal audit that companies must perform. All of these are specified to include operators that are familiar with the process, people who are familiar with the RMP program and have expertise in the different elements that are required to correctly handle, implement this program. Final element, response program. So there are two types of facilities, responding facilities. These are companies that have trained employees on staff that are as my responders in order to implement this part of, of the regulation. They must have ongoing training, they must maintain their equipment so that they can respond safely. And they also have to specify their procedures for notifying EMS, EMA, and notifying the public that should release or not. Non-responding facilities, these are companies that are either unable to have the resources to respond on their own or have chosen to rely on emergency services to respond. They must coordinate their response and the notification with local authorities for emergency As you'll note, at the bottom, there's a link to emergency operations plan. The LEPC has compiled this plan and the companies that are non-responding are required to coordinate their activities with this overriding plan that emergency management So some of the common efficiencies that we find when we're going on inspections. So under the plan, we're required to maintain emergency contact information, organization charts. This is important because obviously you need to know who's got responsibility for making decisions related to next activity if something unforeseen should occur. Also, we have seen process hazard analysis findings that did not have a date definite for resolution. During the process hazard analyses, the company also has to set dates in order to resolve the process of the hazard analysis. And so we have seen some of that in these inspections. You want to get this here? That concludes my presentation.
Do you think the facility actually has a trained personnel equipped ballpark?
Ballpark, I think it's around seven right now that are responding facilities. These are the companies with greater resources and more personnel. When it comes to emergency response, you have to have a certain number of people available to respond and then people backed up to be managing part of that. So the ASRCs, we're all those companies that should expect a head of response.
I have some questions. We're both in the risk management section. Most of the information in risk management is available or is covered?
So there are some restrictions. Not long after the rules propagated, they're-
It was propagated in nineteen ninety.
Right. And not long after the, the rules propagated, they determined there might be a, a threat of terrorists using this information business all before nine eleven occurred. But they made some changes to the plan to restrict the off-site consequence analysis data. So the determination of how far out the consequences can reach and the number of people that are potentially subject to a release, that data is restricted. Information on certain sections of the RMP is restricted, but generally information is available through EPA reading rooms or through local administrative reading rooms.
My second question is, when this regulation was passed, a lot of these companies had thresholds, say a thousand pounds of chemicals on their list. What they would do, they would lower their threshold to five hundred pounds. Thinking that, well, they lower the list, they're going to take, lower the threshold. But I think if I'm not mistaken, there's only certain lists regardless. If you got five pounds, you still have to say, uh, risk management plan, is that true?
Well, the, the rule contains a list of, an exhaustive list of companies that are subject. Generally, the quantities are around ten thousand pounds for flammables. It, it varies for toxins. Chlorine, for instance, is close to two thousand pounds. But generally, the off-site consequences were lessened by reducing the amount of chemical you had on the site. So that was the logic for allowing companies to then deregister. We have had several over the years that reduced their quantity. For, for instance, ammonia, the Lows recently stopped manufacturing milk into their bill, but they still use their warehouse to distribute products. And because they no longer had the need for ammonia and the quantities that would be subject to RMP, they kept their parts of their system, removed quantity, and also put in administrative controls to make sure that they don't exceed ten thousand pounds of ammonia and therefore they have to register.
Well, I want to work with people's appliance, this company's found a loophole. They was trying to get below the threshold to keep from submitting the risk management plan. What other question? This risk management plan, is it, is it currently be updated, revised on some type of timeline?
Yes. So the risk management plan is required to be re-updated every five years. Along with that, the companies are doing ongoing updates of the process hazard analysis, which is required to be updated every five years. That is probably the deepest part of the program and every three-year compliance audits. In addition to that, operating procedures are required to be recertified every year. So there are a lot of ongoing checks. In fact, with the scale of companies that we have, many of them will break down their processes and so that their ongoing PHA is smaller, they're doing a little bit every year, but on a five-year cycle, they're updating all of it.
For the board's consideration, we wanted to bring you both some information about one oh seven and our risk management plan. Because the district will be releasing an advance notice of proposed rulemaking to update our RMP rule, there've been some changes at the federal level. We will be releasing that, I believe, at the end of the month, first of next month for a sixty-day public comment period. Once we receive those comments back, we'll bring that to one of our committees. And then when we're ready, we'll send that out for formal public comment.
Any other questions? Public.
Yeah. For the element PD inspection on a three-year basis, is that separate or part of the inspections under Regulation Two One Six or Two One Seven?
I'm sorry, that, sorry.
So RMP is independent of the three-year or two-year inspection titles listed in Two One Six or Two One Seven?
Yes, RMP inspection is, I mean, it's its own federal program. It is not necessarily limited to air programs nationwide. There's a EPA Office of Chemical Accident Prevention. I'm sure I've got that, that acronym wrong because there's probably a billion of them, but there's an office that does land and emergency management and they're responsible for overseeing the RMP program. So it's actually not in air in the EPA structure. Most of places where it is administered, it's a region, although there are several states and localities that- Although there are several states and localities that also have taken delegation as far as the number is dwindled, mostly they're in the south.
So your inspection that you do for RMP is for only sources that list a threshold quantity, and that's not independent of inspections for stationary sources under 216 and 217?
Yes.
And that includes minor sources that may report a threshold quantity?
Yes, we have minor sources. We have on-air regulated sources that only use ammonia but do not have any other air or contaminant releases. And then of course Title V's and I think one or two figures.
And the last question I have is, whose responsibility is it to perform these off-site consequence analysis for in-transit rail cars? They can like one, three, beat it, not a quarter, go down, forget for that.
Right. In-transit rail cars are not considered a part of the RMP program. It's stationary source is the key word for being subject to RMP. So that is not considered to be a stationary source. Once it crosses the property line generally and is unhooked from motive force, EPA considers it a part of the chemicals that are stored at the stationary site. So regulations for department transportation would cover the chemicals.
Okay.
Any other questions? Would you be able to direct the board again if there are other questions from the board? Okay, quickly. The time constraints here. Any comments or questions on the reports the board has received? Any notes in their packets on the air quality data, environmental staff reports, commissions, actual commission report, or compliance investigation status summary?
I have a question about the compliance investigation status summary. I see we have a lot of comments coming from the Smell My City app, which is good. But it's mostly all of them saying that the CNO formed an investigation of the area but unable to detect any odor and it was closed. Is that a timing issue or?
Typically on those, we'll do multiple rounds of surveillance. It's not normally a week out once closing. It normally holds open for a week or so. We try to resolve things from early in the month before this report is done.
And does that get updated as well, some of what reported, it's an update?
Follow-up of it.
Okay, good.
Any other questions on the Torren's report today? If not, I think we're now at a stage that we can come back to the new business and have the opportunity to, to vote on the amended degree orders. You have heard the district's recommendation that we adopt the amended degree board order with BAE Systems Plan and Armaments. Is there a motion to adopt the order?
So moved.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hearing that, there's no nays. The ayes have it, and the order is adopted. You have heard the district's recommendation that we adopt the amended degree board order with cuff and cement company. Is there a motion to adopt that order?
Yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
I have one question. I'm sorry I was late, but I got tied up in traffic for two hours in the seventh one south. But Honesty Cosmo, cement amended degree board order, it mentioned that they are going to build a gate or, sorry. A raised stack.
Raised stack, yeah.
What is the aspect of completion of that raised stack? Is that, was that in the?
It is in the agreed board order. They have until March 31st. It's an alternative for them that they may raise their stack. They have to declare by March 31st whether they will do so. And then, I'm not sure I get the right date. I believe they have 36 months to complete construction.
Three years, okay. Thank you, that's all the questions I have, I'm sorry I was late.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and the order is adopted. I think with that, the board meeting is adjourned. The next one, from the prepared ones.